I'd like to call the order for Westmont Village Board Meeting of June 4, 2020, at 6 o'clock PM, and ask Clerk Simmsky for a roll call.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Addington is absent today. Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzel?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Village Manager May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
I know there are more here, but I don't, didn't think you wanted me to read them all.
That's fine. We've got a quorum, and we can continue. At this, this point, I'm gonna waive the pledge. Very difficult to do that when we're all saying it. And I'd ask for any open form requests. I understand Manager May has one.
Yes, sir. Um, there was... We think I would have had it up. There was one public comment submitted today via the online electronic method of offering public comments specifically for the Village Board meeting June 4. It is, um, it's in the public comment forum, but it's written as an email, so I'll read the entire thing. And, uh, as, as such. Dear Mayor Gunther, I implore you to take notice of the dire circumstances that small business owners who have made our community relevant and vital for so long are one by one seen that they can no longer make ends meet. Taxes, insurance, rent, and other fixed costs must be paid. Just when we thought we could open, we were faced with the civil unrest and disobedience. In the best of times, retail is difficult with the advent of internet purchasing. What we do, what we need to do is come together as a community and support our local businesses. If Westmont could take the initiative and solicit the cooperation of its neighbors, Hinsdale, Claredon Hills, Oak Brook, and Downers Grove, in developing a marketing campaign promoting buying locally, I firmly believe this would go a long way to revitalize retail here at home. We need our customers to return. We need our stores and buildings occupied. We need tax revenue flowing again. Everything begins at home. Our businesses, our livelihoods, our families, and community all matter too. Sincerely, Preston Bokas, Urban Trigear.
Oh, thank you. And again, we're still having the virtual village meetings until we can meet all together in the chambers. And prior to the start of each mini, meeting, citizens can use the online public comment form They can submit their comments and feedback. We'll move on to reports. Um, I've got the first one. And, um, this, we're living in a very difficult time right now. And there's been numerous emails that I have received about civil unrest and police practices, procedures, and policies. And I've asked Chief Gunther to, um, make a presentation to the board and answer questions. Most of those emails are about the eight steps for policing. So at this time, I'm gonna ask Chief Gunther if he could address the civil unrest and the policing prac, procedures.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is gonna be sort of a lengthy report, so I'll have about, uh, at least probably 10 minutes of, of your time. Hopefully, it'll be well worth it. Um, you know, due to the tragic incident in Minneapolis, which is kind of the flashpoint of the beginning of the civil unrest, coupled with two months of COVID lockdown, current pretty high unemployment rate, and schools and colleges being out. It's, it was kind of the perfect storm of, of the unrest that's been in the news, both regionally and nationally. In the last week, uh, you know, I've had lots of briefings with the mayor and the manager on a daily, you know, multiple times a day to let them know what's happening, um, on what we're monitoring. And, um, so I'm gonna explain a little bit about how we're handling, um, our portion of DuPage County and specifically inside, uh, Westmont. One of the first things that we did was increase our manpower in more prime time, um, areas, um, including, um, you know, patrolling with an emphasis on the commercial and the residential areas of town. Uh, we have a, at least one command staff officer at night, um, either myself or one of the deputy chiefs on the street, uh, in case anything flares up. The, uh, mutual aid plans that we have in place, uh, we've been working on them for years. We're well-practiced in them. We use, uh, several task forces, including Merit, which we signed up for last year. Uh, that's the task force I'm the vice chairman of, and, uh, we have, uh, representation in most of the components, including SWAT. Just within the last hour, our SWAT team was activated for Naperville. They currently have a protest of roughly 500 people. And they were also in Naperville a couple days ago in their last protest. We've been, uh, offered mutual aid to Downers Grove and Oak Brook within the last few days, and will be assisting with, uh, Addison in, uh, for a protest this weekend. The, you know, we're, we're capable of handling anything that's thrown at us insofar as we're gonna handle what we can with the personnel that we have on staff, and then call additional resources if we have to, if we can get people here in a, in a hurry. So, um, again, this is stuff that we do, we're practicing, uh, and train for on a routine basis. One of the components that, you know, matters most, and one of the things that we, we pride ourselves on is our ability to gather intelligence and information through social media platforms, which is where most of the protesters, um, are communicating. So things are hashtagged, just put on Twitter, or Facebook, or Snapchat. And we have the capability of, of tracking that in real time to figure out where people are heading. People like to head where they know people will be, and, uh, so it's, it's easy for us to get ahead of those types of situations. And these are very well-advertised demonstrations. Complicating peaceful demonstrations are, you know, we can call looters and rioters who embed themselves within peaceful protesters in a, you know, an attempt to create anarchy and, uh, you know, do you commit smash and grab, vandalism, steal things, and then, uh, you know, force confrontation with either law enforcement, business owners, or community members. So we're on top of all of those issues, and, um, you know, within the last several days, almost nonstop, I'm in constant communication with community members, uh, business owners, and residents alike. So we're fielding a lot of questions. We're hopefully putting confidence, um, in those residents and business owners that, uh, that they're, you know, feeling safe, and that, uh, we are, we have their backs, and we will be there to support them at all times. So, uh, that's the quick update on civil unrest. You want me to go right into the policies and procedures, Mayor, or do you wanna stop there and do questions?
Why don't we, um, field any questions about the civil unrest first? I do have to say that Chief has worked out three or four nights. They take turns. Uh, um, he's got his uniform on now, and I think we're addressing any problems, and we're assisting other communities. So seeing no questions, I'm gonna ask you to go on to the police policies.
Thank you, Mayor. The, um, we've, we've had a lot of, uh, voicemails, emails, all sorts of outreach for, uh, from community members with good intentions for, uh, taking a look, uh, at our policies and making sure that the Westmont Police Department follows, um, what they consider to be decent policies for, uh, several things that, you know, they think the police should be doing. So just to summarize some of them, uh, the mayor is, uh, receiving emails that the Westmont Police Department should be banning chokeholds, requiring de-escalation training, having a policy for duty to intervene, which would be, you know, similar to the Minneapolis, um, where the three officers should have stopped one officer. Um, that would be the intervention. That's, um, a policy for that. And then, uh, comprehensive reporting of all activity. Uh, earlier today, I sent the mayor and the manager copies of our policies, uh, and one state law. Chokeholds are banned by Illinois statute, so that's already, uh, in the law. And everything else that was recommended, um, we already have a policy on. The, uh, you know, part of the policies and procedures and the unrest is, is a function of, um, community involvement and, you know, what, what does the police department do for, for outreach? The, um, so I wanna go through a couple of things that, that we do routinely that the community should be made aware of if they don't know already. Uh, last year, January 2 of 2019, I signed the Ten Shared Principles, which was a vision of former President Obama and his 21st Century Police Task Force. And in cooperation with the Illinois Chiefs of Police and the NAACP, they came up with Ten Shared Principles, which, uh, I can summarize as, um, the edicts being treat all persons with dignity and respect, reject discrimination, build and rebuild, trust through procedural justice, practice community policing, develop strong and ongoing relationships with community members, and endorse the use of de-escalation tactics. The state of Illinois already mandates, uh, training in a lot of those competencies, and we receive either annual training or training every three years, depending on the competency, on civil rights, constitutional and proper use of law enforcement authority, cultural competency, human rights, procedural justice, and use of force. Well, probably use of force is the number one thing we train on. We do that probably more than, than annually. One of the things I'd like to turn to or re- remind the community of is, uh, on an annual basis, we put out a, what we call a summary of accomplishments, uh, which we present to the Village Board, uh, the last part of the year to kind of, uh, show what we, what the police department set out to do at the beginning of the year and what we accomplished at the end of the year. A lot of the things that we do, um, that we're proud of, and which takes a tremendous amount of, uh, skill and dedication by the police department staff are in those summaries, and they are linked to our, the homepage on the, in the police department webpage, off the Village webpage. And we're going to post them again, all three, to, uh, Facebook, to the Westmont Police Department Facebook page tomorrow. We're also proud of our Citizens Police Academy. It's a temporary program that runs September through December. I know that a lot of people that are panelists right now have taken the Citizens Police Academy, and it's, it's probably our number one way of reaching community members to show them how the police department interacts with the community and shows the actual work that goes into the jobs that we do. Uh, we've, uh, two years ago, we invited members of Unity Partnership, which is, which was created in 2017, that creates, uh, and builds relationships between police and citizens. And we had two members, the president of, um, Unity Partnership, Regina Brent, take the class along with Paul Scott, and, uh, they both raved about it. They had a great time, and I just wanna read a quick quote from Regina. She said after graduating from the CPA, uh, the Westmont Police Officers became my brothers and sisters and no longer just to serve it with a badge. We have a relationship now which is more important than a partnership. I care about their safety and their reputation as long as I know they care about the welfare of every race, religion, and community. And, you know, that's the kind of feedback that we get on a routine basis, and, and, you know, certainly Regina was impressed when she went through our Citizens Police Academy. Uh, one of the big things that we're gonna accomplish within the next couple of weeks is to receive accreditation through the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. Uh, that's a program that's sponsored by the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association. Uh, the Westmont Police Department has not been accredited since 2009, and so now 11 years later, we're gonna reinstitute that. And, uh, you know, it's a peer-reviewed, um, analysis of our policies and procedures that we have on the books. Uh, there are subject matter experts that come in to make sure that we're using best practices in law enforcement. And, um, once the Village Web, News website is activated and we pass accreditation, we'll be posting all of our policies and procedures to the website for the public to be able to see and look up and to see exactly, you know, how we do, what we do, and what guides us, um, to do, um, our jobs. A few other things that I'd like to make mention of is, uh, you know, we, we, I'm a chairman for the Mental Health Task Force in DuPage County. We have, uh, 31 out of 37 of our personnel that are Crisis Intervention Team certified. That is a specialized training that is, um, specific to de-escalation techniques and to talking to people with, that are in a mental health crisis. Uh, we were part of the, along with other village, uh, departments, the Adventure Friendly Westmont Initiative. And, uh, the Police Department is a huge supporter and huge, um, participant with the Illinois Special Olympics. Now, all of these, all of these entities that I just named, you know, are, are work that we do with our, um, vulnerable populations, and it transcends race, gender, ethnicity, all of that. We, we help everybody we possibly can, and we're, you know, we're proud of it. Um, and just to kind of finalize, you know, this is trying times, and we, you know, we fully accept that challenge, and, you know, what great challenges come, great opportunities, and we hope that, uh, you know, long-term, you know, things will be, will be, get better in a hurry, and, um, and, you know, everybody will be better for it. You know, I, I can't be prouder to be your police chief. Uh, the, the great thing about my job is you get to see the end results of their great work, and I get to see the process that they put in to doing their jobs every day. And, uh, and it's a, it's a great seat to sit in, and to be able to watch all the talented people that we have working, uh, in the police department and throughout the village, you know, deliver the services to the community members. And, uh, I'm happy to be here. Thank you, Mayor. Turn it back over to you.
Well, thank you, Chief. Anybody have any comments, questions for the Chief? I do have to say we're in constant training, and even though he gave an update, we're always looking for better policies and procedures. Uh, evaluating accreditation will be one of those that will review us and give us any suggestions. And I think we've been always open to, uh, have additional training and procedures. So at this point, Chief, I appreciate you giving us an update, and, uh, you need to go on the street?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. It's easier than talking into my computer screen.
All right. Well, thanks, Chief. Um, go along. We've got an update. The COVID-19, it seems like, um, it's not a forgotten, it's been pushed to the back. And in Chief Riley's, uh, absence, I had to ask Deputy Chief O'Hare to give, um, a quick update.
Deputy Chief, uh, you're still muted on our end. Oh, look. You have to plug that thing in. Tested. Are you on now? No, we're not, we're not hearing you, Kevin.
Well, while Kevin's trying to get on, I've got a couple other, um, I'll let, we, we've gone into phase three as far as the state of Illinois, and I'd ask Larry Forsberg to give a community business update.
Thank you, Mayor and Village Board members, for the opportunity to share some insights on what's going on in the Westmont business community right now. That's absolutely correct. The Restore Illinois Plan Phase Three, the recovery phase, began last Friday, May 29. Um, as of today, we're 75 days into from when the governor issued the stay-at-home order. And quite frankly, for many of our business members, it probably feels like 750 days. Um, Phase Three, though, is a very welcome transition phase. Uh, that means basically that we now have non-essential businesses that are open. Uh, bars and restaurants now only have the opportunity now to do pickup and delivery service, but they can also provide outdoor dining. And, uh, on behalf of the restaurant and dining community in the village of Westmont, a huge thank you to the village staff and to the village board for such a cooperative effort to get the outdoor dining opportunities and guidelines together in such quick order. From when the governor issued that, uh, um, opportunity, two weeks ago this Wednesday, within nine days, those guidelines were out, and restaurants were able to serve food to, uh, customers again. So a huge thank you to the village for that effort. Um, also, this allows personal care, such as hair salons and spas, and I can't tell you how many people I had talked to who could not wait to go in and see their barber or their stylist again. A huge plus. Uh, health and fitness centers are now able to do outside training, one-on-one. Uh, retailers are now open at 50% capacity of their, of their particular stores, which is a welcome addition. Uh, that allows people to cut back on their, uh, online shopping and to engage on a shop local, more shop local campaign again. Uh, service businesses are open, offices such as accounting offices, law offices, engineering offices in the community are back at work, manufacturing. Uh, so we're starting to see the village come back to life. And the phones are starting to ring again. More emails are starting to come in at our business locations. And it, again, it's been a very welcome transition, and, um, everybody's already looking forward to the next phase. I had a, um, a couple calls earlier this week about, from restaurants, asking what the capacity would be for Phase Four in communications that we've partnered with the Illinois Restaurant Association. They are in negotiations with the governor's office right now to determine whether that will be a 25% occupancy or a 50% or whatever it may be. So there's still a lot more information to be coming up shortly. But, um, again, a welcome transition, and we're starting to see our business community come back to life. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Larry? Thank you, Larry. Is Deputy Chief O'Hare available? Technical difficulties.
You know, that's, yeah, I didn't follow it. Uh, you know, if I could add, Mayor, the, um, uh, fire department, uh, meets with the mayor regularly, and at these meetings, we do a report. Uh, Deputy Chief O'Hare did provide a report at the Administration Finance Committee that met prior to this meeting. The, the, the reports that are done, there, there's a lot of good information, and everybody can easily follow statewide information, uh, our metrics there. Uh, DuPage County has an excellent dashboard that shares, uh, you know, very general information, community by community, and county by, uh, on there. The, what is it? The DuPage County Health Department, it's called the COVID-19 Dashboard. So it, it's a great resource for anybody, and it's, you know, it's free, uh, free access to it. The Village of Westmont has, uh, reported on here 309 cumulative positive, um, uh, COVID ID positive tests. Uh, of course, that was since the beginning, so there, there's no information about, you know, recent numbers and what the, um, you know, that doesn't take into account recoveries, uh, either. But in the Village of Westmont, and one of the important things that was noted was that this is reported by zip code. So it is, it, these could be people that are affected, and they might even be out of state, but if their home address is 60559, uh, it gets reported here in, um, in Westmont. That comes into play when, you know, we've got mailing addresses. We have unincorporated areas that are, use that zip code. We have areas that are in town that have different zip codes. So it's just a, a very general factor, but, uh, is that you all know there is a very large number of what is termed a congregate, uh, living facilities, like nursing homes and rehabilitation centers. And with that, the, um, uh, I've already lost our local page, but the, um, in the Village of Westmont, uh, there are several, you know, nursing homes. So the public safety departments do get information on a location-by-location basis in that environment, but not the rest of the community. So for everybody's information of the, of the 300, uh, you know, that are community-wide, about two-thirds of those are from the, uh, congregate living facilities. So that's just a general overview. We are all on a good, uh, you know, trend downwards as, as far as new, uh, the rate of new occurrences. So, uh, we're, we're, we're solidly in that, um, Phase Three Restore Illinois category.
Good. Thank you. A couple more items. Uh, Westmont student at Kids Climate Summit. We've been, uh, fortunate. I'd like to recognize Westmont student Owen Burbom, who recently participated in a virtual Kids Climate Summit. He made an impressive presentation about the environment, presentation of cost, of lunch programs, and we, we will publish a press release with a link to his presentation soon. So I wanna congratulate Owen Burbom for his recognition. And today I had the opportunity to participate in a virtual tour of the FMC Nautatorium at Tiwanha Park. Uh, there, there was over 200 prospective event hosts of our FNC Nauticarium, Nautatorium, and they were showcasing our new world-class swimming complex. It's not done yet, but they were really, um, it's impressive to see, and I'm sure you could probably, will get you a link to watch that. Uh, and, um, I'm very proud to say that I was part of that, and I'm looking forward to having the Nautatorium open here in Westmont. So, uh, that's all I have, and I'll turn to Clerk Simmsky.
Ginny is, uh, muted as well.
Well...
One more time. You had it off for a second. There you go.
I'm sorry. I'll start over. Village offices have reopened. Some services are by appointment only. Patrons are expected to follow social distancing guidelines and wear face masks when entering the building. Many services are offered online. For more information, call the Village Hall at 630-981-6200. And I do wanna apologize. I did not call Attorney Zemanek's name. I wrote you as present, but I can't, I forgot to call your name. Sorry about that. He is here. He's always here. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving on. Uh, trustee Harold Berry III, Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, our committee's been on hold here for a while, but we're, we're really hoping that, that we get back at it soon, and we have stuff to, to present. But, uh, in the meantime, 63rd and Cassis is moving right along. Uh, they have been, been going. They have been considered essential workers all along. Uh, the parking lot is now open from Cane's to get access to Mariano's. The Mariano's gas station is under construction and, uh, moving along. Of course, Las Palmas was, is just about ready to go, and then the world kind of turned upside down. So we're, you know, eagerly awaiting them, and, and they're an outfit that has an outdoor patio that, you know, in, in a better time would have, would have had access to it. Uh, overall, I visited with a lot of downtown business, uh, on Friday. Most of them had great success and were very, very complimentary of Bruce and his staff, the Public Works, and the police and fire, uh, for all working with them. So the, the, I, I apologize. I had, I didn't get much outside of the downtown, uh, to talk to other restaurateurs, but, but definitely our downtown group is happy. Uh, we're also seeing, um, Bishop's Chili is now going to, uh, have a facility outside it or is currently working on it, and I saw today that DJ's, uh, Sports Bar is now open with outdoor dining. So, um, kind of the new normal here for, for a while, but, but we're seeing a lot of activity. And, uh, we just encourage everyone, when you are out and, and doing something, purchasing gas or, or getting food, please consider Westmont first. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I see, um, I'm gonna touch on one item before I go on. All right, I see, I'm going to touch on one item before I go on. A small business mega lottery. It runs through June 17th. Raffle tickets are available at westmontchamber.com. There will be two grand prizes of $4,500 each in Westmont gift certificates. Winners will be announced on June 18th. Please buy a few raffle tickets today to help our business community. All the proceeds from this goes right back into the participating businesses. So Chambers running this and please buy your raffle ticket. Trustee Johanna Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to touch base really quick. We had a special Public Safety Committee meeting on May 26th. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss the COVID-19 response and the Restore Illinois Phase Three reopening of restaurants, which did hap- happen this past Friday. So I want to say, we are hopefully moving in the right direction with everything with the COVID-19. And then our Fire and Police Departments, the social distancing celebration parades have ended with almost 150 parades and several thank you letters being sent to the Fire and Police Department. I do want to thank you for that. I heard a lot of positives from a lot of residents. They really enjoyed it and it, it really put a nice bright smile on everybody's face that the Fire Department and Police Department visited. And then our next Public Safety Committee meeting will be August 27th, hopefully at the Village Hall, fingers crossed. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. My report this evening is on Westmont First, so I wore the appropriate attire here. And if there was ever a time to volunteer or shop locally or support your local charities, this is a perfect time to do that. One of our initiatives at Westmont First was to start a whole mural project. And the Communications Department is assisting with that and coordinating those efforts. But we published our first collage last week in a press release and I just was blown away by how beautiful that was and the, the participants. When you see families participate in that and they're tied together in some form of artwork and inspiring people with hope in, as we know, a, a difficult time, it got even more difficult. So we're very proud of that. If you haven't participate, participated on your own or with your family, please pick a letter, do some form of art or inspirational writing or any form of, other forms of media and provide that. And then Communications Department will share that with the community through social media or on the Village Facebook page. But very cool, very positive responses. So we're liking that. And the goal is to, you know, create awareness about positive mental health. And I need it, you need it, we need it. And then the other effort that we have is the census. And the census is over 70% now for the Village of Westmont, the participation. We got about 30% more folks out there that we've got to encourage to fill out their form online or on the webs, you know, online, over the phone. There are several ways to do that. But I did some rough math over the weekend. And what's remain, the remainder out there is, if you think about it over the next 10 years, where we have about $110 million still out there in that 30% that would go to the state and we get a portion of that. And so I'm encouraging everybody to continue to push the census and the completion of those forms so that we all win. The State of Illinois wins and the Town of Westmont wins. And I appreciate the efforts on that. And, you know, the work that Jenny's doing through the Communications Department and all the Westmont First Committee members are doing, promote it through the schools and through their particular library, through their particular avenues. I'm very proud of the work that they're doing. That is all, thank you.
Well, thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. We had an Administration Finance Committee meeting just prior to this meeting. We discussed garage sales, the possibility of having a village-wide garage sale in the fall and it will be waiving the permit fees for 2020 for regular garage sales. They discussed delinquency forbearance, waiving the payment of the late bills and fees to August 31st. Can't get out of them, but you can defer paying them for now. We also discussed the Small Business Grant Loan Program that'll be set up in the near future. And our next Admin Finance Committee meeting will be July the 2nd. The Taste of Westmont will be going virtual. We can't gather together as we normally would. We'll look for details to come. And sadly, tonight would have been the first Cruisin' Night 2020. Due to COVID-19, Westmont Special Events is still discussing creative cruising night options. So look for details to be announced soon. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Trustee Nero.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a few things today. Our next Public Works Committee meeting will be June 18th at 4:30 PM. And then also I wanted to make sure everybody is aware of a new program we're doing, the Adopt a Planner Program. There's a few planners still left. Residents and businesses both can sign up to adopt their own downtown planner and manage it. Kind of a neat thing to do. Please sign up on the Village website. Makes it pretty easy to get involved. And the last thing I have to, to say, Mayor, is just a thank you to, to all our first responders and, and really all the staff that are interacting with a, a lot of public now in, in a different manner. And I appreciate what everybody's doing because it's nice to keep business moving and, and I'm glad to hear that Village Hall is open back up. And that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I know today that our assessor, Greg Bolts, and our county board member, Mr. Hart, brought pizza to the first responders at the police station. And I thank Trustee Nero for being there to greet them. So again, thank you. Anybody got any items they'd like removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda this evening first is the Village Board Minutes, or to consider approving minutes of the Village Board meeting held May 7, 2020. That's followed by Finance Ordinance Number Two in the aggregate amount of $3,656,237.39. We have purchase orders, first one being Amalgamated Bank of Chicago, This represents the, the amount for the entire fiscal year for debt service on bonds, particularly Bonds 213A, 213B, 2017, 2019A, and 2019B. A portion of that to do in July and a portion of it's due in January, but the amount represents the entire year. Next purchase order is Six LP, $35,805. Represents annual audit services. Next is Don Morris Architect PC, $153,720. This is in fact, and it represents plan review and inspections, but this is an open purchase order for the, for the entire fiscal year. Similarly, the next one is for Mike Chata, $22,000 that are for the plumbing inspections. And, and like Don Morris and the plumbing inspections, these costs that are incurred, we do pay them, but then they're recouped in permit fees. Next purchase order, Corin Maine LP, $22,118. That's for water meters for new developments, also a recovered expense. And the last purchase order is DuPage Senior Citizens Council, $24,000. This is a contribution to support the services in the Village of Westmont. This was something that was originally put on hold during the budget process and then during the recovery conversations that we have and economic recovery. The Village Board agreed to authorize the support for DuPage Senior Citizens Council. Those purchase orders total $2,693,405.50. Bring the total of purchase orders together with Finance Ordinance Number Two And that is everything on the consent agenda, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve as read? Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second to approve. On the question, anybody got a question? Seeing none, I'd ask Clerk Simmski for roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business. A, Renew Declaration of Emergency. The Board to Consider an Ordinance Which Renews Until July 2, 2020, The Declaration of State of Local Emergency Executed by the Mayor on May 29, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance? Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second. On the question. Seeing none, I'd ask for roll call, please. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business B, Planning and Zoning Commission Reappointment. Board to Consider a Motion Approving Mayor Gunter's Reappointment of Thomas Sharp to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a five-year appointment, a five-year term, and this will be Mr. Sharp's second appointment to that commission. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little. Motion been made in second to approve. On the question.
Mr. Mayor.
We're full force. Go ahead, Trustee Barry.
Are, are we looking for another candidate now? Because, and, and Trustee Nero and I had a little bit on this conversation. It's been brought to our attention and I, I believe maybe to staffs that one of the members is now residing out of state and kind of only coming back for the meetings. I, I don't know that that serves the village at, at its maximum.
If I, and I'll check into that, but I understand that the address is still Westmont and is going there periodically. So I, I do know that person's very active in the chamber. And, but I will double check. And if that's the case, then we'll ask her to resign.
I can confirm a little bit if you'd like now, sir.
Yes.
They do have properties in two different states, but she's a local business owner and a local resident. And pointed that out before coming on the Planning and Zoning Commission, was in that transition, has not missed a meeting and, you know, just looking forward to serving, long time in business.
Okay, I guess I was misunderstood. I, I thought they were going there full-time because the residence is for sale and so forth. So I, I guess I was misunderstood.
The local residence is, is a relocation law.
Yeah, she ta- she talked about renting until she officially retires and moves down to Florida. But right now she's still very active and her main address is Westmont. Any additional comments? I'd ask for roll call, please. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, Declaration of Village Property as Surplus. Board to Consider an Ordinance Declaring Certain Village-Owned Vehicles and Equipment as Surplus Property to Be Sold at Open Off Auctions. I got Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. The property identified in attachment has outlived its useful life. It's outdated, it's non-functioning and it needs to be replaced or otherwise not economically maintainable anymore. Upon being declared surplus and sold, the items will be removed from the village's property inventory. On the list are five fleet vehicles, which will be disposed of by auction through Open Off Auction Services on behalf of DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference. Staff recommend approval of this declaration of listed vehicles and equipment as surplus and as a method of disposal.
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second to approve the village property as surplus declaring, this is a standard procedure that's done once, twice a year, sometimes more. Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry. Trustee Barry. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D, Engineering Agreement. Fire Department Headquarters Regional Stormwater Improvement Project. Board to Consider an Ordinance Authorizing Engineering Agreement with ESI Consultants for the Maintenance and Monitoring Engineering Service for the Completed Fire Department Headquarters Regional Stormwater Improvement Project. And Director Ramsey?
Thank you, Mayor. We are seeking engineering services to reform the required three-year maintenance and monitoring inspections for the completion of the wetland and native plantings within the new stormwater management facility outside the Fire Department to ensure the surviv- survivability of the plantings. The proposal is in the amount of $15,500 for the three years. Trustee has approved this sum of $15,500 for the maintenance and monitoring of engineering services. This is something that we do with a lot of our detention basins, that we do have to have this monitoring over a three-year period to make sure that everything that we planted in the wetlands can survive. So the staff does recommend approving this proposal of the amount.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little? Motion made in second. Comments, question? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business E, Ward a Bid Proposal. Ashford Subdivision 61st Street in Richmond Stormwater. It's a detention project. Board to Consider an Ordinance Accepting the Bid Proposal from ENCAP Incorporated for the Village's Ashford 61st Street in Richmond Stormwater Detention Project and authorizing a contract consistent with the bid documents. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. The village did accept bid proposals from eight contractors for Ashford 61st Street and Richmond Stormwater Detention Project. A little bidder was in cap with a bid of $198,602, which is approximately 25% below the engineering estimate of $265,718. The project includes grading to, to gain additional detention volume and installation of native plantings to provide water quality improvements to meet the county's stormwater ordinance. This project was also awarded a $51,000 grant from the county's water quality program that they have. So that's why we, we're pretty excited about this, that we were able to get a grant for this project to help pay for this. This is something that's been an issue for quite a while now and the Park District, you know, is also involved with this project. But we're going to get the work done and then work closely with Bob Fleck and make sure that, you know, he, he's happy with the way the job is as well.
Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second to approve. On the question. Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business F, An Engineering Agreement. The Ashford Subdivision 61- Board to consider an ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with W B K Engineering L L C for Phase Three Construction Services on the Ashford Subdivision, Sixty-first Street in Richmond Stormwater Detention Project. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is the, uh, engineering, uh, Phase Three Construction Services, uh, of a sum of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents of the same project we just talked about, uh, for the village, uh, Village's Ashford Subdivision, uh, in Richmond Stormwater Detention, uh, project. Staff recommends approval of the proposal in the amount of twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents for the construction services.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second. Comments? Question? I do have to say this area has been overgrown and needs a lot of tender loving care, so I'm glad we're moving forward with this. Seeing no question, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, miscellaneous, uh, does anybody have anything they'd like to mention or report?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I apologize in my report, uh, I just wanted to thank the Westmont Fire Department and also send our condolences out, and, and if we had connection there, I didn't know of Chief Riley or, but, um, we lost a resident in a fire, uh, yesterday, so in Newfield Manor, so, um, I do want to pass along our condolences and again, thank the, the fire department.
Uh, I, thank you, trustee Barry, and that's, if we could have got, um, Deputy Chief O'Hara on the phone on the Zoom call, he would have mentioned that, uh, that issue, and, um, nobody, uh, there's no suspicion of any foul play, so at this point, it looks like it truly was an accident, but they're still investigating. Uh, seeing no other miscellaneous, uh, other than, uh, we're hoping soon we can all be together back in the board chamber. Uh, I know that, uh, trustee Addington had some medical concerns. Trustee Guzzo is also getting a replacement. Trustee Addington didn't have a replacement, but she is, so we'll try to get all of us back here as soon as possible, as soon as it's safe to, uh, be together. But at this point, I don't need an executive session, and I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
And I want to thank everyone for participating and also viewing us tonight. This meeting is adjourned.